Okay, it's five o'clock, let's call the meeting to order. Item number two on the agenda is prayer and pledge allegiance, so if everyone will please stand, we will say the prayer. And allegiance, Dr. Wiley, will you lead us, please?
Father, just thank you so much for this great country that's made it what we are. We ask you to bless all of these elections that are going on today, guide and direct the people that are being voted for, that they can be worthy of their positions. Father, we thank you for the position of trust that you placed us in. We ask you to bless these deliberations that we have, bless the city that we love, this county that we love, and this state. Make us grateful for all of these blessings that you just have on us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is approval of minutes from previous meeting. Hopefully, I hope you've had a chance to review them. Do I have a motion to approve April 19, 2022 minutes?
Certainly.
Do you have a second?
No second.
Okay. Everyone in favor, raise your hand.
Is Bill on the phone?
And Bill?
Yeah, I'm raising my hand, you're just getting ready.
Okay, yes. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Wiley. So, motion passes five zero. May the 2nd, 2022, this was the joint meeting with the county. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I assume so.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Bill seconded.
Bill seconded.
Yeah, I was there on the phone, so I really prefer for the people that were there to...
Yeah, that's smart. So, everyone, Bill seconded the motion, so raise your hand if you approve.
I'm raising my hand.
Okay. Motion passes five zero. Next is the May 2nd, 2022 joint meeting with the DDA. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I assume so.
A second? Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. I think Angie beat you to it, Bill. Bill vivins. Angie seconded the motion. Everyone in favor, raise your hand. And Bill, do you approve?
I approve.
Okay. Motion passes five zero. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of agenda or motion to amend the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Bill, minutes, I move to approve.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Bill vivins? Okay, he approves, motion passes five zero. Okay, the next item on the agenda is call public hearings, and this will be for items A through F. So, we're calling public, call public hearing. The first item is item A, which is an ordinance to amend the administration, boards, and departments, and including every department within the city. And I would like you, since this is our second reading, I'll let you go with this one, please. Jack?
Item 5A is the second reading of ordinance VR 2022-15. It's essentially a housekeeping ordinance. That portion of the code is the portion that deals with organizational structure of the city, and basically has not been changed for probably at least 20 years or so. So, it's a little outdated in terms of how the city actually operates, and also the city administrator had made some recommendations in terms of, you know, how the apartments and all are structured. And so, ordinance number VR 2022-15 is really just to reflect in our code the current organizational structure of the city.
Do I have a motion on this? And actually, we will ask for if there are any comments also. Anyone up here in council or in the audience? Yep. Okay, so let's, since this is a second reading, we will do a roll call vote. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance? Okay. Dr. Wiley, may I make a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So, let's do a roll call vote, and we'll start with Dr. Wiley. Yes, okay.
Yes.
Angie, are you?
Yes.
Yes.
And Kristi? Bill vivins?
Yeah.
Okay, so motion passes five zero. Okay, the next item is actually a rezoning, which we will open up for public comments, as well as we will hear from the applicant who is applying for rezoning, and this is with 78 West Fane. And as with these particular rezonings, what we will do is we will give the applicant 10 minutes time, and the council can ask questions at the end or during that time. And then we will also give 10 minutes to any opposition, and we'll vote after that. Okay? So, Kristen Young is actually speaking today on behalf of the applicant.
Just to place on record with the staff report?
Yes, it is, and the planning commission's recommendation. So, this is a, this is a rezoning request, 78 West Fane Street, from R2 to C2, and it's been reviewed by the planning commission, as well as staff, and we recommend approval based on the following findings. One, the subject property is entirely surrounded by C2 zoning. The existing pattern of development in this area is commercial in nature, and that there's no adverse impact on the surrounding properties if this zoning is approved. So, therefore, we recommend it.
Okay. Kristen, we'll give you 10 minutes.
Okay. My name is Kristen Young, I'm here to re, I'm here to represent...
Hold, hold it up.
My name is Kristen Young, I'm here to represent my client, Arty Velazquez. We initially bought several parcels up there by Home Depot, 51, 61, and 71 West Fane, which were houses that were up there, you know, just in the middle kind of of all of that commercial business up there. We got demo permits and took those down. 78 West Fane, which is the one that we're talking about tonight, was the final one that was standing there. It was a brick house, we got a demo permit, it's been taken down. For it to remain R2, wouldn't make sense at all, and we're asking it to be rezoned commercial for a future restaurant.
Does anyone on the council have a question?
Well, I think, baby, since this came up before in the public about egress, I think maybe Bill might have mentioned too, egress, egress, and the restaurant plans have nothing to do with the rezoning. And the rezoning is to make this commercial, and that it's not something that we, that is discussable and debatable at this juncture. It was brought up before, and I think it's right to put it to rest until there's a request to build a building there.
Correct. And everything around it, C2. It's the only one that's part of it.
Yes, it's an island. It's been an island, and it could be fixed, so we'd have to fix it.
I thought that property, when it was residential, that it announced was on Highway 5. That's correct. We all have a different, different outlook in there?
Yes, we actually have an easement going into where the fireplace and stuff is back there. We've got an easement for Ronnie Tipton, so...
What's not? Oh, oh, thank you. Do we have any other questions from the council? Okay. Angie seconded. At this time, we will allow 10 minutes for any opposition, so if you come up to the mic, please state your name. Okay. So, no opposition, okay? And again, as our city administrator has pointed out, it was approved, it was recommended to be approved by planning and zoning, and it was also through our Northwest Regional Staff Analysis. It only makes sense to do this. So, with that being said, do I have a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation of May the 3rd on this parcel?
I assume so.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote. Dr. Wiley? Yes. Angie?
Yes.
And Kristi? Bill vivins?
Yeah.
Okay, so motion passes five zero. Okay, in conjunction with that, we're going to be doing a zoning ordinance, amending the zoning map, and basically, when we rezonate this property, we have to rezon the map. I don't think we have to actually vote on that in this committee, do we?
This is just the first reading of the ordinance, but it's essentially an ordinance that just calls for an amendment to the zoning map to reflect the rezoning that you just ordered, and it will be on next month's agenda for the court.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from the public? Okay. Now, moving on to item D, this is also the Searls Foundation, Philip, you can come up. And I'm going to have city administrator read what the recommendations from the planning commission, as well as our staff analysis, before you begin.
So, this is a request to rezone the Searls property from C2 to high-density R3 zoning. It's a tract totaling approximately nine acres, and it was reviewed at the May 3 planning commission meeting, and they recommended approval. Staff recommends approval as well, the request, this falls, the proposed rezoning and development would not introduce a character that does not currently exist at a low density. The rezoning would reduce the potential land use intensity from commercial to residential. There would be no burden as far as the school system, or water, or sewer system, roads, or public infrastructure. And this is well within the multifamily, it's contained in the comprehensive plan, lays out an affordable housing option as a goal, and it's well within that criteria. And again, it's recommended approval by the planning commission and staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Philip Searls, I'm the president of the Beverly J Searls Foundation. I am very happy to be in front of this council again, as would for another third rezoning of the site. One of the bigger differences this year is that this year we actually own the land. That's only been, that's only came about because we've seen such a large outcry and support from the citizens of Blue Ridge for additional workforce housing. We would like to create 84 units of workforce housing. There would be no short-term rentals, this would all be on annual lease, on annual leases. By restriction, we can only do that, and one-bedroom rents would be starting at $695 a month, two-bedroom rents would be at $831 a month. We are also overjoyed from not just the public support, but also from individuals like Studio Trumble and Greg Arnold, both can be part of our design team. We want to reflect that this community is a Blue Ridge community, and the best way to do that is to actually have people who are working in Blue Ridge in these fields to be doing our façades and interiors, as well as our landscape architecture. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do you have any questions?
So, what's the difference between like a Section 8 versus a Section 42? Because that's what you are, right?
Correct, yeah. It's a great question. So, Section 8 would be a subsidy for an actual tenant. So, whereas if a rent was $1,000 a month, if a Section 8 voucher would be with that tenant, and if they can only afford, let's say, $300 a month, that voucher would pay the other $700. The Section 42 program is a financing mechanism where I, the owner of the development, or in this case, the foundation, receives a subsidy from the state government in the form of a state, of a federal tax credit. So, and then it is our job to then sell that credit to an investor, that would be a bank or insurance company. Their only financial return to the development would be that tax credit. In the case of this development, they're actually going to be generating about 73% of the total development cost would be raised through the sale of these tax credits. This program has been around since 1986, and in Georgia, we use this tax credit across the state to generate, to create about 35,000 units of workforce and affordable housing every year. It's been wildly successful. It actually takes out the idea of, for lack of a better term, takes out the, it puts more responsibility for maintaining a public good, which in this case is a tax credit, on the owner of the real estate versus the tenant. So, there's a lot more on us as owners to make sure that our properties are maintained to the highest quality standard. We get audited every two years, like physical, people from the state and from our investors will come out every year or two to actually inspect the community. And as this is, this being my livelihood, this is, you know, we take it very care, we treat very seriously any infractions that the state might find. Our foundation, by the way, has never had an infraction of this program in the over 20 years we've been doing this business.
Do we have any other questions, do we? So, this is just the first phase. Go ahead, Bill. Go ahead, Bill. Angie was talking, but go ahead.
Okay, okay, this point, Section 8, you said it also workforce housing?
So, no, sir.
We'll move this, fine.
Okay, yeah, if it's okay, can I move you?
Maybe, right there.
Over here in front of the mayor? Okay. And Councilman Vivins, if you can't hear me, please let me know. So, yeah, no, we are not Section 8. We are not asking for Section 8, we are not, we are not applying for Section 8. What we are doing, however, is we are taking the existing Housing Authority residents in Blue Ridge into this community. One of the issues that we have in our smaller rural communities is we have older outdated public housing. The only way for those residents, for those public, for those housing authorities to update their properties is to move the residents out. Now, anyone in Blue Ridge can have housing for these residents, plus, you know, please go forth and do that. But for the 40 years this Housing Authority has been in Blue Ridge, plus, nobody has. We want to do this to, one, provide the Housing Authority with an ability to rehab their units, and, two, provide new workforce housing. So, my financing mechanism is not Section 8, but the Housing Authority, I don't know where it's coming from now.
I don't think you can fix that.
It's probably feedback from that speaker.
Okay, okay, get it out.
Is that better? I'm sorry, yeah. Okay. So, we would be taking the Housing Authority residents, they have an option to move back once their, once the Housing Authority's been renovated. We have nothing to do with the renovation of the Housing Authority. That's, the Housing Authority owns their property, they control their destiny, they can do whatever they want. As an aside, though, the foundation, our development would be taking about a $30,000 a year hit decrease to our rental revenues because of what we're offering to the Housing Authority. The rents the Housing Authority pays are lower than the rents that we would be collecting from our affordable, not on our affordable rates.
How many units would the Housing Authority, how many families or units are under there?
They have 48 units, I believe.
Forty-eight.
Yeah, Trevor, do you know how many are families versus seniors?
I don't have the exact number, but I would say it's close to half, being family and senior.
You're going to build 84?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to take a percentage of them and take a hit by moving the people from the Housing Authority into your, to your place?
Yes, sir.
Forty-eight of your units would go to Housing Authority residents?
Yes, sir.
And would your leases with them in any way encourage their, or catalyze their moving back once the renovations have been done to the...
It would be completely on the cover, sir.
Anything about the, so basically, at the end of the day, your rent could end up being stuck at that level forever if they don't choose to move out and go back to Housing Authority.
And I have pro forma'd that, and the property would...
I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, sir. We would never force somebody out of a unit unless, without due cause, right? So, I would make sure that, under current eviction process, I don't have to get my hands dirty with that, I don't, but we never would.
So, you're going to let them go to this new development for the same price or the same rent as they paid the Housing Authority?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, this first 84 that you, or is it 84 that you're going to, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Do they get to move first, or do you like rent, you know, lease them out, and then the last phase would be when they go?
No, they'd be coming in first, because, well, right now, we would have more work to do in the city to actually be able to do a Phase 2. Phase 2, if down the road, and it's not, we're talking about now with the senior development. And like Trevor said, because he has families, we can't put families in a senior development, we can't put seniors in a family development.
But on this nine acres, though, will it only be these 84, or are you going to do multiple phases on this property?
That would be something that I'll be working with the city for a future ask, but not right now.
But you'll have room, though?
I will have room, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's your overall goal?
Yes, we have. Do a Phase 2, how many units will your Phase 2 have?
However many you would let. I would ask for 72, but it's a work-in-process with mayor and council to what the city would feel like would be appropriate.
These would also be workforce housing?
These would be senior housing. So, the seniors, if they're working, that's fine, but we can generally consider workforce housing to be in our, in our vernacular of general occupancy, so there's no kinds of restrictions. Under fair housing, the only thing you can actually discriminate against is age, and you can make a property age-restricted. So, in our community, we'd be 62 and better 100% of our units for our age restrictions.
And then I assume, as we discussed prior, that Trevor then has the option to go in to the Housing Authority and remodel those units?
Yes, sir.
And then the residents can decide whether they want to move back to those units or not?
Yes, sir.
So, how many units do we have? Did you say, Trevor?
Currently, we have 48.
So, that could be another 48 units for workforce housing or...
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
But that's separate from you, though.
That's separate from me, I have nothing to do, I have no control over what the Housing Authority would choose to do.
Yeah, but with 48 of your 84, those less, so say 35 or something, those will be actually workforce?
Workforce, yes, ma'am.
No restrictions on seniors or...
There would be no restrictions on the seniors, the, there would be, I think of the 84, nine units are unrestricted, so there's no rent restrictions, there's nothing to do with the affordability side. We pro forma out our rents, so our rents are dictated by area median income. That's where our, that's where I know my 695 for my one-bedroom, my 831 for a two-bedroom. We internally project 10% higher for market for unrestricted. So, if somebody makes more than what's allowed, and I, do you have the numbers? I can read it, yes. So, we have income limits on who we can rent to. So, if somebody makes more than that, they would be in an unrestricted unit, but that rent would then be, if it's 635 for a one-bedroom, would be about 700 for the market rate, and then the 830 would be about 910, that would sound like? Yeah, so about 10% more is what we, what we always pro forma out, because just as far as we've seen, that that's, that's absorbable by the, by, you know, the market, which here our market is family and family. Sure. Unless you want.
So, a one, individual person cannot make more than $29,940, and a two-person household cannot make more than $34,000.
That's in the units after the Housing Authority units are done.
Yes, those are in the units.
And as the Housing Authority folks move back to the Housing Authority, those other units will be?
At that. At that. Yes, sir.
So, they will return to workforce housing?
Yes, sir. So, yeah, so the...
So, maybe you're taking the Housing Authority low-income folks, moving them in until we revitalize, and then you're going, those will have the option to move back, right, Trevor?
If they so choose to.
Yes, sir.
They can stay if they want to move back.
Yes, sir.
And if they move back, those will be workforce housing.
So, yes, sir. So, in the, for the tax credit program, for the, when we go to the state, we have to designate a unit to either be a restricted unit or an unrestricted. Unrestricted, like I said, is anything. We only have nine of those units over the entire property. Everything else is a restricted unit, regardless of Housing Authority unit or not. So, if a Housing Authority resident chooses to move back, that's still a restricted unit and still would fall under the affordability requirements.
In order to keep the conversation going, to the mayor, do you have any knowledge of what the plan for the Housing Authority would be in terms of rehabilitation? Would their units be comparable to and as desirable as these workforce units? And, or is there no, at present, no plan for how the rehabilitation would be done? No plans, no design, and Sydney Trumble didn't do it?
Correct. I don't think there is a sign in effect, our director of the Housing Authority is here, if you would like to ask him.
Well, I'm asking the mayor, so the mayor can pass that question.
So, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we don't have anything set in stone as far as a plan, we have to...
Yeah, come up to the mic, so we can, have you recorded? And we did, we did have a meeting with Trevor this week.
Yeah, I met with him yesterday regarding another matter to get program.
I hate to do it, you got to say your name for the record.
I was getting there. My name is Trevor Aiken, I'm the executive director of the Blue Ridge Housing Authority, and I've been there for seven years. I have talked with the mayor throughout the process of us wanting to develop, and with the Searls Foundation on that aspect, but as of future plans, designs, anything set in stone as far as the current land, buildings, and units we occupy, we don't have anything set in stone right now, no, sir. We don't, we don't, because there's too many unknowns right now, as far as it ever coming to fruition, and we have to wait for the state to potentially award the deal to the Searls Foundation. But there are talks that are going to start to happen as far as, may or not, it's starting to happen.
Can I answer this?
Absolutely.
So, I've done work with multiple housing authorities in Georgia. The process for a Housing Authority would be that they would actually issue, call them RFP, or Request for Proposals, within the developing community, like myself, with other developers as well. Those developers would then submit a plan of their own, and the Housing Authority can give them guidelines, we would like this many units in replacement housing, we would like unit sizes to do this, we were looking, you know, whatever it is that they want, whatever it is that the Housing Authority and the board, the Housing Authority Board decides, would go into RFP, and then developers would respond back to it, and they would say, we can do those things, this is what we've done in the past, this is what we want to do with Blue Ridge, and this is how much Blue Ridge would participate in that area, the Housing Authority. And then the board would then make a decision on, of those proposals, who they were choosing to forward.
We're all seeing on that, too. Or we could possibly do it on our own. The possibilities are endless at that point, you're not restricted therefore by the federal government, the federal community, and I believe that property. We just have to make sure that whatever we do with this, at this site, we can charge reasonable rents that are not too high, that can sustain that site to operate. The only thing we have to consider, if you've got the infrastructure there already, the renovation would be minimal at best, that would probably have to do, not saying that it wouldn't be cheap, it wouldn't be easy, but there's no reason why we couldn't do it ourselves if we partnered with the city and we utilized assets within the community, possibly help us provide that workforce housing that everybody so desires.
So, I'm sure it remains questions?
I have a few more. How do we, like, how are the applicants chosen, and how do we know that, like, our people are going to get it and people aren't just going to be shipped in here?
Exactly. That's a great question. So, any marketing that we would do, which we probably won't have to do any marketing at all, it would be in local newspapers. The only people that I'm attesting to this, that the only publications we're going to be posting this would be, obviously, our website, the state agency, which requires it, but it's going to be in the News Observer and FYM, I mean, there's, or any of the local news sources. We're not going to be this, you'll never see this in the AJC, you'll never... We're not going to be this, you'll never see this in the AJC, you'll never see this in the Gwinnett Times or anything like that. This development is, we want to make this development as Blue Ridge as possible and have as much housing for Blue Ridge employees as possible.
Can you guarantee our people will get it or?
I can't, I'm a fair housing violation, unfortunately. I wish I could, but it's just a fair housing. So what we can do is just limit who we're marketing towards. And that's what we would be doing.
Let me ask you another question with this. How's this, so I'm very big on like impact fees, I guess, like, I feel like all these things are moving in and it's disturbing our beautiful town. So like, around your place, can you, are y'all going to be able to put things to kind of help cover up so the neighbors aren't going to see a building there that used to not be there?
So we would actually have, where we can have, like, tree plantings along our bridge line and along the south portion of the site, the south portion of the site. So we would have some visual screenings as the best as possible, also with our elevations. I think our elevations are forty-one feet. And if I've done my math, like, I believe on the elevations of the hill, our rooftops will not even go over the hill.
And let me reiterate on that too, Kristi. They will be following the same guidelines as everyone else with, with green space, et cetera, that we would not ask them to do anything above, you know, what we would ask someone else to do?
No.
Same thing with impact fees, everything that is Ask, with water, sewer, all that, that would have the same.
I would also throw out there, we are going to be engaging with DOT to talk about if that, if that light, if that intersection would be a civilized intersection in the future or not. That's just something that, part of our own due diligence, when we're looking at it from a safety perspective for our residents, that if that, if that traffic counts, would then dictate a light intersection there.
Yeah, and that of course would be down through GDO, so.
Yes. But we would gladly pay for it because we want to make sure that it's being.
So I was here before, when you were here before, and Andy, you offered to do a lot of things because there were questions about, you know, traffic light, you know, the impact of, on Ask a Road and all that, so the entrance would be off of Boardtime Road now?
I would have an entrance on Boardtime and then it's on entrance on Trackside, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, you know, if there is any problems or anything, I mean, you?
I would very much be interested in helping out. Yeah, four-way stop signs, traffic light, you know, construction has unfortunately gone up like thirty percent that year. That being said, one of the other things that we're doing, late on the agenda, we're going to talk about revitalization plan. We have actually, we're partnering with Fannin County Family Connections, we're going to be making a donation to them. They would be a community quarterback with our team. We'd be making a twenty-five thousand dollar donation to Fannin County Family Connections. We've also committed, we're a little lobster today because we're playing golf with, with Attit, a golf tournament over at Olds Go. We've already committed to giving five thousand.